Good evening. My name is Jaywon Sheldon. On behalf of PTA Council, I'd like to welcome you to this year's BOE Candidate Forum. Joining us tonight is the League of Women Voters of Northeast Westchester, who'll be moderating and timekeeping our forum and who have helped set the ground rules for the candidates. All of the questions they'll ask have been submitted by the Somers community. Thank you to those of you who contributed. I just want to make two quick announcements before we begin. First, tonight's forum is being livestreamed as well as recorded, and will be available to view on the district website until the election. That being said, any unauthorized use of any portion of tonight's recording is strictly prohibited. All of this year's candidates have acknowledged and agreed to this rule, and we kindly ask that the Somers community please do the same. Also, as many of you are aware, one of the candidates this year is a PTA Council member. I'd like to assure you that this candidate was not involved in the planning of tonight's event. Just like all the other candidates, this candidate has no prior knowledge of any of the questions that will be asked. As is the case whenever council members run for board seats, we've worked hard to ensure that no information was shared. In the spirit of the PTA Council, which believes in celebrating all students and staffs in our schools, we ask that you approach this forum, the election, and all the candidates with respect and kindness. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Susan Polos from the League of Women Voters.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Welcome. I am Susan Polos. I'm here tonight from the League of Women Voters, Northeast Westchester. Thank you to those of you who are here tonight and to those of you who are watching at home. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters, Northeast Westchester, and the Somers PTA Council. Special thanks to Lisa Pizuro from the League and to Jaywon Sheldon, Yvette Harold, and Mimi Freeman from the Somers PTA Council for their work in organizing tonight's forum. I'd like to introduce tonight's timekeeper, Maura Rosenthal from the League of Women Voters, Northeast Westchester. And now, I will turn it over to Alice McNamara from the League of Women Voters, Rivertowns, tonight's moderator.
Okay, thank you. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots organization that has been moderating candidate forums for over 100 years. The League does not support or oppose any candidate or party, although the League does advocate for issues. There are seven candidates vying for three seats on the school board. They are Michael Rotacco, Joseph Vella, Chadwick Olson, Michael Rinaldi, Ife Chang, Rosalyn Galino, and Amanda Candell. All candidates were invited to participate. Joseph Vella, Michael Rotacco, and Michael Rinaldi are not participating this evening. All candidates have agreed to the ground rules, which include they get one minute to make an opening statement and then one minute for a closing statement. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question, and each candidate is entitled to one automatic 30-second rebuttal.
Opening only one minute? I thought it was two.
Our timekeeper has signs which will indicate to the candidates when 30 seconds of their time remains and when their time is up. The only restrictions on candidate responses and statements is respect and civility. So, we drew lots for the order that the candidates will speak. And so, we will... Okay, so we will begin... Excuse me. We'll begin with opening statements, and we'll start with Mr. Chang. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I really like to thank the League of Women Voters to hosting this forum. In my opinion, the board of the school board is the most fair and honest democratic election. I served 18 years, gone through six times election. You don't have to campaign. You don't have to spend money. You basically speak your mind. You stand on your records. And I stand on my record. For 18 years, I consider myself very independent and have a rational mind, based my decisions on analytical analysis and data, and more and more on my experience. So, this forum, unfortunately, we don't have all of the candidates here. I wish we had, because I personally believe this is the only process that we can have a real democratic election.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Olson.
I'd like to thank the PTA and the League of Women Voters for hosting once again this annual event, which I have always found to be probably the most important for connecting with and responding to the community. So, I'm honored to be here once again. I'm very happy to be here in person. Three years ago, we were on video in the midst of COVID. I've been a resident of Somers for over 22 years now. Three children have... Well, two are just completing. But I've gone K through 12 through the Somers Central School District, and I have a lot of pride in what they've experienced there. Why am I running? I'm really back to the first reason I ran 10 years ago, and that is to make sure that all of our students that were meeting their needs, the different learner types, the different needs they have to excel and to be supported. And I think that's the really critical requirement of public education. So, I believe in our public education, and I think we need to keep providing that to everyone.
Okay, Ms. Candell.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the PTA Council for hosting this forum. My name is Amanda Candell, and I'm hoping to earn your vote for reelection to the Board of Education. I've lived here in Heritage Hills for the past 20 years, and together with my husband, Mark, we've raised our triplet sons, who've attended Somers Central School District since kindergarten. Three years ago, I decided to run for a seat at the Board of Education to do to my passion for our school district, my belief that all learners deserve a safe, welcoming learning environment where they could achieve success and reach their full potential, and my desire to build positive relationships between the schools, parents, children, and the community. The commitment has remained steadfast. Over the past three years, I've dedicated myself to my role as trustee, vice president, and now president of the board, and I spearheaded the effort to find our next superintendent and am honored and proud to have led the board to unanimously appoint Dr. Adam Bronstein as our next superintendent. As a trustee, I focused on advocating for the needs of all students, ensuring their voices are heard, promoting transparency and open communication between the board and the community, and supporting innovative educational programs that foster critical thinking and creativity, creating a safe and inclusive environment where every student can thrive.
Hello. First, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters, the PTA Council, and the district for making this event happen, as well as those of you who are here in person and those of you who are watching the livestream, as that's how democracy truly happens, is by informed choices. My name is Rosalyn Galino. I am a proud graduate of Somers High School. As a wife and parent in this community, I have served on or belonged to every PTA that we have in our district. I have also been a longtime member of SCF and am currently serving as the president of this organization. I believe in open and transparent communication and will always be available to answer all of your questions from the community, as I am tonight. I believe in inclusive schools that celebrate multiple pathways for success by focusing on academics, the arts, athletics, and social and emotional learning. This is an exciting time in our district with a brand-new superintendent coming on board. My years of volunteer work, as well as my background as a career educator, make me a strong candidate to ensure we focus on the needs of all of our learners while also keeping lines of communication open, being fiscally responsible, and ensuring that Somers remains our community.
Okay, thank you. And our first question, we'll start first with Mr. Olson. What are the most pressing issues currently facing the Somers Central School District, and how do you plan to address them if elected?
This question actually...
Excuse me.
Sorry?
We start with Mr. Olson.
I didn't hear you, sorry.
Our future Somers Central School District, we are set for a great future. We have a new superintendent, which we know we're all very excited about. I think some of our real challenges coming forward are going to continue to be fiscally able to maintain the breadth and depth of the programs that we hold as a high standard here in our community. I've been part of a lot of challenging budget sessions, and I think we've made smart decisions in the past, and we will continue to be able to meet these needs. You know, our enrollment has now leveled out, so I think we have some nice stability with our programming going forward, and that allows us to really get our educational programs consistent and we're able to evaluate without lots of changes in how we're looking at them. And it goes fast.
Ms. Candell.
Sorry, could you just repeat the question one more time, too? I just want to make sure I got the beginning.
Oh, sure. No problem.
Thank you.
What are the most pressing issues currently facing the Somers Central School District, and how do you plan to address them if elected?
Okay, thank you. I believe that the most pressing issues right now for our school district, and actually, I had talked about this in the newspaper recently when we were asked for some statements from them, is the costs continue to rise in our school district. And it's important to be fiscally responsible, but we also have to maintain our rigorous coursework and programs and arts and athletic programs for all our learners. And I believe that, you know, we've been designing excellent budgets, and I understand that they continue to go up, but as costs all do. But at the same time, we've really been handling it, prioritizing the fiscal responsibility of handling things through attrition, for instance, and not with the declining enrollment in the high school, and prioritizing our programs and making things work, looking for ways to utilize BOSEs to the maximum extent possible in order to save on district costs wide as well. And... Okay. Apparently, I have to stop.
In order to continue to ensure the excellence in academics, athletics, social-emotional learning, and arts that we have in our schools, we need to make sure that we have transparent and open communication throughout all participants of our community. We need to ensure that all of our students are celebrated and recognized, as has begun to happen at our Board of Education meetings, where students from different components of our academics are brought in and allowed to express what makes their journey fantastic. We need to continue to retain our excellent and dedicated and well-qualified faculty. We recently celebrated numerous members who've given over 25 years of service to the district. We need to make sure that we do not rest on the laurels of excellence by continuing to challenge ourselves to find new ways to meet all of the demanding needs of our multicultural and diverse community.
There are many issues that are confronting Somers. The big one is now we have a nation divide, society divide. It propagates everywhere, and that is a problem the school has to face. It's a big problem. The school has difficulty to deal with, but we need to face that. Then, there are, within the big picture, there's a lot of microscopic problems. The big picture, of course, is the economy. Our economy is uncertain, and we probably will have some tight years coming up. So, I think, in my opinion, Somers needs to think ahead, plan ahead, not wait till things drop that you are, you know, too late to respond. So, I think to serve on the school board, one must keep this big picture as well the microscopic views of issues. Thank you.
Okay. And the second question will first... Ms. Candell will answer the question first. What do you see as the board's primary responsibilities in supporting a newly hired superintendent? And if elected, how would you balance your oversight role with providing the necessary autonomy for them to lead effectively?
Well, first of all, I was very excited and honored to be part of the interview process this year and hiring Dr. Bronstein. And we've already been communicating in his onboarding plan. He's already been spending a lot of time here in our school district, getting to know everybody and building the relationships there. And I think that's going to be key when we begin and do our reorg meeting in July if elected, is to have him sit down with the board and we really lay out our roles as board members and norms and communication and how that's all going to go down. And we all agree to it, and that's how it's going to have to be for the policies going forward. I think that oftentimes, people have a misconception of a board's role and responsibility in what they do. We, as a board member, NISBA actually defines it as like a... You know, we're the board of directors, really. And the superintendent is the chief executive officer, who then translates those policies.
So, we have this unbelievably exciting opportunity to onboard a dynamic leader who wants to be part of this district. He made it very clear that he's excited about the opportunities. It's no different than onboarding any other employee. As Ms. Candell stated, it's important to sit down with him and express that this is what our community values. This is how our communication works. These are our procedures. And then, it's also important for the board, for which I hope to be part of, to hold him accountable, not to rubber-stamp things, to support him, but to also remind him that this is a district that is rich in excellence and needs to continue to be so. It's important to establish shared goals and a vision as to where our district is and to where our district's going and where our district will be in 10 years. And by having open and transparent communication with him and with our community and making sure that the community can be heard, that is the best way to make sure that he is a successful leader of our district.
Can you repeat the question exactly, word by word?
Of course. What do you see as the board's primary responsibilities in supporting a newly hired superintendent? And if elected, how would you balance your oversight role with providing the necessary autonomy for them to lead effectively?
Thank you. We are really lucky that we have hired a very high-quality superintendent. And not always you have that luck. And I am the only one that gone through this process many years ago. And in early days, the board was more experienced and were ready to go through the process with lots of detailed thinking, planning, assessment, and so on. This time, I must say, we have relied on the so-called consultants. Not that the consultants are not useful. They are. They are very experienced. But on the other hand, the school board itself is missing an opportunity to go through a working experience to understand what you need as a superintendent, what superintendent can fit Somers the best, okay? Nothing better for you to really delve into that kind of question deeply. So, from now on, we're lucky we have the superintendent. We will work with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olson.
It wasn't luck that we have gotten the superintendent to come to our community. There's a... We have a lot of strong candidates. And I will say with a lot of pride that I am very proud of how I co-led the search, moved it along at a quick pace, and made sure that all of us on the board, as we got through the evaluations, as we got all the feedback from the community, the very meaningful feedback from the community, really dialed us in on what we were looking for, and it made that choice easy. As a trustee on the board, we work... Yes, yes. We have a responsibility, as some say, a check and balance, but it's really teamwork with the leadership, with Dr. Bronstein. And so, our responsibility is to help guide him in how he communicates and reaches the community. And I think he's off to a great start already. I've been through a lot in the last 10 years that I think I will be able to translate very well to help lead in the future.
Thank you. The next question first, we'll go first to Ms. Galino. What do you hope to accomplish during your tenure on the school board, and how will you measure your success in achieving those goals?
On the surface, that's an incredibly simple question, because we all started with our mission statements and what we think truly matters. But I think that one of the ways that measuring success is by participation. We are fortunate to live in a democracy. I would certainly measure success by more people in our community attending board meetings and feeling that their voice was heard. One thing that I would hope to accomplish as a trustee is bridging some gaps between different aspects of our community that do not always necessarily feel heard and that don't necessarily choose to attend these meetings. I think that, once we focus on the fact that every one of us is here because we value education, the students in our district, and the people who are in charge of their education, it suddenly becomes much easier to measure success. It's more than test scores. It's how many students are participating in different activities. It's what do our art shows look like? What is our science fair like? What do our athletics look like? And what is the feel around our town as we go to all of our different events? If that is one of joy, we will have succeeded.
Mr. Chang.
Yep. In this question, I think I personally always do not care about personal success. This is a voluntary job. You want a personal success, sometimes you go make your own, you know, career. I took on this job when I already retired two, three times. So, therefore, I treat this as purely voluntary work. And a success is really defined, in my mind, what did you do for the students? What did you do for all Somers students? Somers is a very inclusive community, and I feel that we should continue in that path. We should always put our mind on the students, not our personal, whether success or personal gain or loss, or even sometimes people do feel that you have a personal attachment to a particular child and so on. I have all four kids that graduated school, and they've done very well. I appreciate it. And I now think I basically want to be a volunteer. Thank you.
Mr. Olson.
The number-one measure of success is the outcome for our students. I think it's kind of a full stop right there. And that gets very complex in how you get to that point and how you measure it. I think what I would love to see is to hear more from our former students that are going in all sorts of different directions, all sorts of different opportunities, and hear from them how Somers, how they grew and were more prepared for their future through what we were able to offer here. I think how we get to that success, working with the administration as a board member, is really about a lot of partnership. It's... You don't always see in the meetings some of the preparation work that we put in as we try to understand and work with the leadership on how things are going to be presented. We give some feedback. They make adjustments. The real goal here during our meetings is to get the information out in a clear and positive way, and we, as board members, should be supporting that.
I think, first and foremost, this year, I think we've celebrated more students than ever before at our board meetings and in our schools. And I think I want to expand upon that. You know, instituting the section of the Tusker Pride segment where we're not only recognizing athletes, but we're recognizing musicians, we're recognizing artists, we're recognizing scientists in our schools. These are all wonderful things. I want to continue to be as transparent as possible and with the addition of the Q and A on our website. And then, I also want our teachers to feel supported. I think that's really incredibly important, because without them, we wouldn't be able to have our schools. And then, most of all, I want our students to feel successful. I think that's really what's most important to me, and that's what would make me feel successful as a board, that our students would feel successful.
Okay, thank you. The next question first to Mr. Chang. How will you use your role as a Board of Education member to address the different needs of all students?
That's a very simple question. You just have to have a fair mind. You support all students. You do not differentiate, like I said before, individual student, individual group, or particular family. I think we have to have that kind of fair mind to treat all students the same. Our purpose is educate everybody. And I believe one of the things we should do that is to recognize teachers. Teachers also has to be able to treat all students fairly in the same way. We often cannot recognize teachers individually for some strange school laws. But I think they deserve to be recognized, particularly in helping students, all students, the whole school, the whole class, as a student body. Thank you.
Thank you.
We all know students have very diverse needs in our community. How we meet those is really important, that we do meet them. I'm not here as an expert on every single student, so I think as a trustee, and this is something I always commit myself to, is to listen and really listen to understand what the needs are. They get brought to us by the administration. They get brought to us by community members. They get brought to us by parents. And it's really important that we listen, we hear them, we get the full picture of what the programs and what we're providing and what our options are, and make sure that we support the administration in meeting all of those needs for the various students. And that's with support when they need extra support. It's with extra challenges when we have students that maybe need something to challenge them more to get engaged with. And so, that's something I will continue to be committed to.
I'm always all for making sure all learners have access to the curriculum. And I think that where it starts from is that it might not always be through the same way as the person next to you gets access to that. So, we need to support the... I'll continue to support our administration when they are asking for professional learning development for teachers to develop the differentiation so that all learners can achieve. And, you know, we really do, as Board of Ed trustees, we really do rely on the expertise of our educators. And we have those discussions at meetings. And we go visit the schools, and we look at the different implementations that they've done. And honestly, like, not every kid is going to learn the same. And not every kid is going to achieve on a test, but they might do better on a PowerPoint or et cetera. So, those are all different ways for kids to show what they know. And I think that's really the direction our school district's been going in, and I want to continue to support that.
The first thing we have to do is to focus on programs that meet the needs of our learners. These include, but are limited to, things that are already in place, such as Project Lead the Way, IB, AP, the middle-years programs, BOSEs, and some of our classrooms that have sensory rooms. We have many, many different learners here, and we need to listen to what each and every one of them needs. We need to support our special educational learners and do all that we can to keep them in the district, because learning is so much more than what happens in the classroom. There is so, so much more that happens that is part of a child's daily education. We also need to involve and listen to our teachers. We need to support the professional development that is asked for by our teachers and our administration, because they are the ones who are directly working with our students, and they are the ones who are doing the absolute best they can. We need to ensure that we are supporting them and making it possible for them to do the best that they can.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. The next question first to Mr. Olson. It's been several years since the IB program was introduced in the high school. What are your thoughts on the IB and middle-years programs in our district, and how do you feel about their continuation in Somers?
I think the IB program in the... You know, just as a quick history, we have our IB diploma program for our juniors and seniors. The middle-years program was instituted a number of years ago. And I think the feedback that we've gotten and that we've observed with the... Just really, the excellent teaching practices for reaching students in many, many different ways and the options that it has given to our students, I think is terrific. We've gotten feedback. We've had other schools come in... We've gotten feedback, we've had other schools come in and observe and have been really excited by what they've seen in the classroom and how they've seen students engaged. I know for me, one of the things I get really excited about, and I've been really excited about whenever on the board, is whenever we've been able to get into the schools and see the engagement. And you see the different aspects of the IB process and language and how that really is excellent teaching and engaging with the students, and that, I think, has been a big success.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, yes, we have, so we have an IB diploma program at the high school, which is a two-year commitment for juniors and seniors, and then the NYPD program that goes six through 10 officially as of this year. And I want to be clear that an NYPD program is not a feeder program into an IB diploma. It's, they're two totally different things, but I'm a big supporter of those programs. First of all, the IB diploma program is wonderful. You could also just take individual IB classes. Most kids do take a mixture of IB and AP. Depends on the kid's styles of, and how they fit differently into their, into their schedules and into their, and how they, and how they react. They're a different style of learning. NYPD is a lot more, I feel like differentiation. They talk about, it's really more a style of teaching. From what I've understood from the teachers and all of our visits, it's been a lot about some of the professional development they've had about best teaching practices. And honestly, the kids' writing has improved so much as well.
At our last Board of Ed meeting, which I was able to attend, there was a presentation from the middle years program, and it was so impressive to hear eight young women speak about creating a solution to a problem that impacted their daily lives through two different programs. But what was even more impressive was when they were finished reading from their pre-prepared notes, they were able to answer on-the-spot questions, which I am here to tell you is not easy to do, and they did it with grace and dignity and showed a level of knowledge that cannot be taught by AI, that cannot be measured by a standardized test. Both the middle years program and the IB program, whether you choose to take one or two classes such as the Theory of Knowledge, or if you are able to delve into the entire diploma program, broaden the intellectual, creative, and educational opportunities for our students, and as such, I will always support them.
Mr. Chang.
IB program, just like education, needs time to show results, to prove its worth. And Somers started, and we worked very well, but I think we need to let the IB program develop in such a way so the non-IB students will voluntarily join the IB program or even praise the IB program. We need to develop the atmosphere that if a program is excellent, it will draw other students, rather than having a little bit of comparison here, there, AP, IB, so on. I think we need to have a more, more direct approach unless we find the program questionable. But I personally believe IB program is a good program, but I think, just like education, we need time to demonstrate and show results and draw people in.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Candell. What do you think the district has done well or not done well over the last few years?
Okay, that broad. Okay, I think, you know, we're always continuing to be improving and lifelong learners, you know, that's a motto I believe in. I think what we've done really well is creating the professional development for our teachers to really expand upon their knowledge. We were really so far ahead in our, the implementation of the Science of Reading for the past few years so that we're going to be well ahead of the state mandated deadline of 2026, 2025, 2025. But in any event, you know, I think that that's something that, you know, they recognized, they realized during COVID that some of the reading scores had gone maybe lower and that they wanted to really tackle that. And then bringing on the Science of Reading and training the teachers and implementing Witten Wisdom and other curriculum pieces into our coursework has really been a big success for, so far this year. Stuff that we have not done well, apparently I'm not going to get to that.
So I would say that things the district has done incredibly well, and I'm speaking slightly as an outsider, as someone who doesn't currently sit on the Board of Ed, is making sure that people can come and speak, celebrating different types of students' success, supporting learners in a variety of different ways, retaining outstanding faculty that have started their career here, have worn different hats, and have found ways to continue to contribute to the excellence of our student experiences here. I think that perhaps we could create even more of an inclusive community. I still would like to see that people are lining up to be led into Board of Education meetings, that we need more chairs, preferably more comfortable ones, and that we are finding ways to make sure that truly every person feels that they are a member of this community because that will erase some of the other issues that exist within our community.
Excuse me, I would request to repeat the question word by word.
Sure. What do you think the district has done well or not done well over the last few years?
Would you repeat again? I think the question seems to have frisked.
No, that was the question. What do you think the district has done well or not done well over the last few years?
Okay, that is really open-ended question. I heard about, people talk about COVID, people talk about, you know, different program. Just last few years, of course, we do have this COVID as a trying period, and we succeeded to manage that, and I think our school came out okay. But however, I think we may not have accumulated enough experience. I always believe when a school has to accumulate experience and project into the future, then you are making your mark, year after year improvement. Otherwise, we'll be repeating because first grade comes in, now the first grade, second grade comes in, now the third grade. What you really need to concentrate and document the success so that your moving forward is assured.
Thank you.
I think some things that our district has done well has started with recognizing some things that we weren't doing so well. And coming out of COVID, we saw the reading challenges that some of our younger and middle, middle-aged students had, and we really addressed it. And I think it's really terrific, the point where we're at right now. I'm really excited to see this cohort that is now going through the Science of Reading, what their, how that is going to help them in their future and where that's going to help them achieve what they, what they want. We've done that before too, when we've made adjustments, you know, with algebra and math. I think one thing our district has done well and continues to do well is get community involvement. So when we have projects coming up, when, like, when we needed a superintendent, we brought the community in. We have a lot of opportunities for community members to come in, give their voice and feedback so that we can hear and help enrich our decisions.
Okay, the next question, we'll go first to Ms. Galino. How do you plan to support the mental health and well-being of students, particularly in light of the social and emotional challenges they may face, both in the classroom and with exposure to social media?
The simple answer is communication. The more complex answer that needs to be delved into is to ask all involved to have a moment of reflection, to think about what they are doing in their classrooms, in their friend groups, in their discussions, in their own postings, to create a community that values and honors each and every member. In order to get rid of any kind of bullying or attacks on any student's social, emotional success, each student needs to know that he or she has a champion in the building, in the student body, and in the administration. Through programs like WIN, through programs like the Community Lunch, through programs like Responsive Classrooms, we are getting closer and closer, but we need to continue to look at, to analyze, and to think, what did we do today to make a student feel welcomed?
Okay, Mr. Chang.
Okay. I think this is a issue that have, so two-sided and on a fine line, that one side, there's a privacy issue, mental health is certainly one of them, and the other side is educating the public so that the issue will be managed properly in school. This is a medical issue, and school cannot be a professional medical solution to these things. So we need to do is educate people, so make this issue open so that people understand whether you are in this side of camp or the other side of camp, you would understand the issue and share the information. And we should do more in school to let people understand this, rather than sometimes hide into the, in the, under the personal privacy and other issues. So this is a balance the school needs to think about how to do it.
Okay, Mr. Olson.
I think as a board member, the easy part of that answer is, is that we support our mental health professionals and resources that we have for our students. I think the harder thing is, for us as a community, is understanding what are the right things, what are the boundaries for our students. You know, there's discussion about cell phones and how we manage those. I think we can generally recognize that there are a lot of traps with social media that are not, not healthy and not good for our kids. So one thing that we can do as board members is we model respect, we treat each other with kindness, we are up here and we are not, you know, we're inclusive, we're understanding, we listen. I think how we, we do have to set an example for our students, and I think that's a good place for us to start.
Okay.
So I've been on our Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Committee actually longer than I've been on the board, and it's been in place now for, I guess, about four years in our school district. It's a, it's a wonderful way for parents and community members and staff to come together and think of different ways that we can help support social, emotional wellness and mental health of our students and different programs. And every year, we have a wellness summit. There was one just a couple of weeks ago, and it was, and it was a real focus on caring for your mental health is important, is as important as taking care of your physical health and taking away that stigma of having, of discussing mental health, to be honest. And the kids participated, it was really great. I would love to see more people there because it's such an important topic, especially for young kids these days with social media polls and everything else. We also, I would like to continue to support our wellness classes, our check-ins, our Tier Two and Tier Three supports in our schools, and I think we can add on some more social skill development in our school system.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start first with Mr. Chang. What is your overall perspective on the concept of regionalization in New York? Do you believe regionalization would be a beneficial option for our school district?
Yes, even though I've been serving on the board 18 years, I still feel that the definition of these terms in our educational sort of institution government, it's always vague. We believe in local community have some say in their education process, and that, in my definitions, is the concept of regional, concept. But there are lots of laws, the school laws, so on and put in and so forth, that a school not always be able to do that, and the community is not always being able to do that. Sometimes this causes emotional uproar and so on, and I feel that the best thing is to have open discussion, define what the, you know, definition of regional concept is. I think most people in this room, in our community, partly do understand, but sometimes they are channeled into one angle and interpret in such a way so that the communication broke down.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I hope we can improve that as a school board.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. What is your overall perspective on the concept of regionalization in New York? Do you believe regionalization would be a beneficial option for our school district?
The so-called regionalization program that New York has instituted, there's been a lot of discussion around here this past half year, basically. And I think it's really important to understand what it is and what it isn't. And, and there is, there's a lot of representation that some people are making that regionalization means that we're going to take the good things we do and give it away to our neighboring districts, or, or give away our local control and have, have a regional board or something like that running our district. That is not what regionalization is. This is really about finding ways, there is, or possible opportunities where if we have a need in a certain area, you know, maybe there's a way that we can work together. It doesn't give anything away, there's no requirement. I think it's good that we're involved in the conversation so that we can make smart decisions for, for the town of Somers, for the, for our school district, and definitely retains control completely within our school district.
Yeah, I think, for starters, it's a horrible name. I think the state has to admit to the fact that it's a horrible name because when people hear regionalization, they think that we're consolidating our school districts into one region. And in reality, what it is, is not that. It's a collaboration across the state utilizing the 37 regional BOSEs infrastructure. And really what it does is then they were going to, those BOSEs are going to facilitate discussions so that you can find out based on the strengths and needs tools that are, were filled out by the school districts to decide what was going to happen with what kind of plan we want to put together, maintaining local control. So I think, you know, each district has a flexibility to decide the extent of involvement. They can choose to participate in some, none or all of the proposed collaborative efforts. And Somers School District continues to have a seat at the table for now. We have spent nothing, we don't, we don't have anything. The list of resources that are, the list of possibilities that are going to be coming forward in the plan is not even going to be any commitment until October. No, it'll be good.
So I would first suggest that anybody who wants an answer that takes more than 45 seconds, which will be left after I say this, goes to the website, the school district website, and looks at the Q and A section that focuses on regionalization, as there is some in-depth explanation there. For the next 45 seconds, though, can I say whether or not regionalization is good for our district yet? I can't because not enough is known yet. What I do know is that whenever there is an opportunity to gain information about best practices that may be occurring in other districts, we would be foolish to pass up the opportunity to learn more. One of the reasons we are such a good district is because we are willing to look at what we've done, rethink what we've done, remodel what we've done, say this is good, this could be changed. Is it possible that there is a practice out there in another district that is better? It might be. Is it possible that somebody could look at something we're doing with one of our programs and say, this is fantastic, I want to learn more about it? Absolutely. It would be disingenuous for us as a school that values collaboration to think that regionalization as such was automatically a bad idea.
Okay, thank you. And next question, starting with Mr. Olson. Somers High School is a step ahead of the state's cellphone ban, having implemented their own version last year. Considering your own experiences and observations, how do you feel the cellphone ban should be handled starting next year in all grades?
Yeah, I think we've made good decisions. I think having, always getting input, first of all, from the community, and always observing how this is affecting the classroom, hearing, when I, we hear from the community, it's not only the families, it's also the educators, and getting their feedback on what they're seeing in the classroom. I think it's very sensible that our... I think it's very sensible that, that our, our children can bring their cell phones to school and there's appropriate guidelines where they can use them. Not in the classroom during class, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think having, just putting them in your little sleeve when you walk in, walk in the room, to me, makes common sense. Feedback that I've seen is positive. That's from my own, my own students, from our teachers. I, I just, I just think we need to keep that open communication and keep it, keep it our decision. I don't think this is something that needs to come from the state. This is something that we're doing a good job on our own.
I agree. I think I'm comfortable with the, the fact that we don't generally allow having a total ban in lower grades, pretty much, you know, during instructional time, K through eight, or during school time, they have to be kept in their, their lockers, the middle school, et cetera. High school, I'm not really in favor of a bell-to-bell ban. I'm still waiting to hear what the guidance is gonna be completely from the state, but it sounds like a bell-to-bell ban is what they're looking to do. I think, I like the way that we're doing it now. And, and we should have the flexibility and ability to allow for that to happen where we do just put it in the sleeves. And I think we should actually also tackle the fact that these are young kids who are 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 years old in, in high school. And we're gonna be, they should really be learning how to responsibly be using cell phones and perhaps being on social media if their parents allow. I don't, but, you know, if their parents allow and, you know, go from there and not necessarily have a total bell-to-bell ban from the beginning of the day to the end.
So if we were to have a bell-to-bell ban, all we've done is solve one small aspect of a much larger problem. Because we are not going to place a bell-to-bell ban on one-to-one learning devices. And we're not going to place a bell-to-bell ban on Apple Watches. So all we will have done is make it more complicated for kids to find ways to circumvent the rule. What I think is outstanding is that our high school student council has already been involved in speaking with the state, inviting leaders here to explain their viewpoints. I think that it is unreasonable to state that we would support a bell-to-bell ban because I don't think we can enforce it. And I'm not sure it's really what the teachers or the students want. And we need to speak to the people who are directly involved in order to make sure that the decision that's being made is one that is in the best interest of all of the people involved.
Okay, Mr. Chang?
Well, I think this is a discipline issue, like many other discipline issues. We need to educate the students to understand self-discipline. Using cellphone is necessary nowadays. I just came back from China. I felt lost. Everybody is using cellphone to pay anything, bus, you know, little candy. And I have to bring cash out, please, you pay for me, I give you cash. It make me feel really backward. So I think the school needs to treat this as a discipline issue and then make students understand there's a self-discipline about using devices, using things in school. And that education process is not that difficult. And we should be able to implement it so that all student body would understand this is almost natural. You should have a self-discipline about how to use cellphone, for what purpose, at what time, what place. Thank you.
Okay. The next question, we'll start first with Ms. Candell. What do you see as the biggest academic concerns facing Somers schools? And what would you do to address them?
I think that some of our biggest academic concerns right now are probably making sure that, you know, while we have the multiple pathways for all learners, we want to make sure that we're putting the supports in place to make sure that all kids have access to whatever they need. I think we're doing a pretty good job of it. I, I would like to see us continue to expand upon that. I'd also like to see our, our state testing. If, if we're gonna do the state testing, I'm not a huge, you know, the numbers come out so late. But I also like to see some, we've already had some of our improvements in the reading. And I'd just like to make sure that we're also improving upon, again, the supports needed for all the academic subjects. And, you know, the, the, the reading scores are coming up. So we really are coming back from, from COVID and everything else. So I think that we're in a pretty good shape.
We need our students to be able to read, and we need our students to be able to do math. And our district is ahead of the game on changing the way that reading is being taught. The support that is happening in the elementary schools is fundamentally sound. We need to make sure, though, that we do not pigeonhole any of our children. It is absolutely possible for a child to be twice exceptional. It is very possible for a student to need support at tier-one, tier-two, possibly even tier-three in one subject, yet for that student to be an advanced student in another subject. And we need to make sure that our pathways allow for that neuro flexibility so that no student is being limited due to one aspect of his or her personality. We also need to make sure that we continue to have multiple pathways to success and numerous chances to recognize that students grow and change over time. So what might be needed as a support in second grade is no longer needed in third grade. And a student that might have struggled in math in fifth grade may well be able to take calculus by the time he or she gets to high school. We need to continually be checking on how our students are doing.
Well, I think our teachers should be also historians in terms of understanding and making progress in the education process. All these different things that if we only react to it or implement a method one time, that doesn't really help in the long term. In the long term is that a school should have a historian type of record of showing how things are, as Lulu said, you know, second grade, third grade, so on. Every year we'll have new second grade, every year we'll have new third grade. We must understand how these grades are educated and improved year after year. If you don't, we are standing on the same point. So I think teachers are our historians. That's why experienced teacher, that, oh, I am a third grader for 10 years, 15 years, they know more because they have in their head as a historian. But we need to, as institution, make institution have a historian view about educational process.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
I'm gonna break this into three parts. I think, I think one is going to be the opportunities for all of our students in different pathways, different pathways, different pacing for learning. So, so we know that, you know, we want all of our students to be able to reach high level. That doesn't mean they all get there at the same time, but that, but we still have to have the opportunities. Our district has always worked really hard to, to put those together. Number two is going to be, geez, future technology, AI. What is, what is this going to do for our education and for our children? And how are they gonna prepare, be prepared to use that in a productive way? And so I, I think supporting our teachers with, with education in, in how to handle that, how to use that as a positive tool and teach responsibility with it. And then, and then the third is going to be, what do we want from our kids when they leave our school? And it's gonna be preparing them for their future. So we want to make sure that they are, they are educated in their financing, how to do finances and self-reliance and, and whatever opportunity, whether it's college, whether it's directly into work.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I'd like to use my 30-second rebuttal, please.
Sure. In fact, I just wanna, before you do, I just want to remind the listening audience that as part of the ground rules, each of the candidates is entitled to one 30-second rebuttal.
I would like to take issue with the idea of teachers not already being historians. Both the teachers and the chairs at each department and the chairs of our special education services routinely make presentations at our board meetings, showing data from year to year to year to year, showing the progress that has happened. And I know from my involvement in PTA and SEF that every single teacher in this district takes time to rethink his or her plans, his or her projects, and ways to continue to gauge success. So I don't think it's entirely fair to say that our teachers are not historians at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the, the next question, we'll go to Ms. Colino first. How would you work to build strong relationships and increase transparency between the schools and the community?
We need to make sure that people in our community realize that they are part of our schools. Whether they have a child in the school or not, there are still ways for them to be involved. Of course, every community member can be part of a PTA. You don't have to have a child in that specific school. We also have programs like the mentoring program here in the middle school, which pulls in people from the outside to come and work with our children. We need to do a better job of celebrating the successes of our children in different mediums. We need to make sure that each person who pays taxes, who supports our schools, realizes that he or she is more than simply a financial contribution, but a voice that is valuable. We do that by making sure that events to our schools are advertised, such as the project night that's coming up on Thursday. We make sure that we continue to launch the achievements of our students in arts and in sciences. And we make sure that we continue constantly to communicate to the point that people are tired of hearing about our wonderful schools yet again.
I don't want people to be tired of hearing us. I wish we had more people willing to come, like Amanda instituted the Q and A with parents. Unfortunately, not too many responded. I think we need to have people really come forward. The, I understand that everybody is busy in their own life. And, but, on the other hand, they also realize education is the most important thing. And children's our future, our country's future. So I think if you have that priority set right, you will be really willing to spend some time to communicate, to participate in conversations with, you know, different groups. So we have to continue to explore in those areas somehow to stir up the Somers community to really respond to the educational needs and issues. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, I think the best ways, I mean, it all starts with listening, of course. Listening and understanding what, what concerns are from the community. But then it can't stop there. And I will give some props to Amanda because she spearheaded the, getting responses out on, on our Board of Ed, Board of Ed site. I think that's a great way to, to make sure that, that people are seeing, you know, what, how we're, how we're responding to concerns. Connecting, connecting the community to the appropriate parties in the administration. Make sure that we're not blurring the lines of who does what and whose role is, is what role. I, I think that really helps with community understanding. Opportunities for involvement. We continue to make, make sure that, that we have those for the community. And I think the more anyone's involved, the more they understand what the district is doing, what it's all about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, I mean, a couple of people have already mentioned. We, we did add this Q and A to the website. I did spearhead it so that when we get emails or there's public comment that comes in from a meeting, you know, the person will get an individual email back. But we also put up the questions so that the general public can, can benefit from that. And I think it goes a long way of closing that loop because sometimes there's questions that are asked at our public board meeting. It's not really a place to interact back and forth, it's a business meeting. But we do listen to those concerns or questions from the community and we are able to hear from that. It's also important for people to come to the board meetings, reach out to the schools when they have, when they have questions on something. We also added a community, not a community, a quick at-a-glance contact information on the website when it was updated this year, which has been, I think, useful so that people have a way to know who to contact and when. These are all important things because I, I feel like if, if, you know, if you don't ask the question, you're not gonna get a response.
Okay, thank you. So this will be our final question and before, before our closing statements. And this question, we will start with Mr. Chang. Technology in the classroom is here to stay, but it lends itself to shortcuts and easy access to cheating. How can we as a district help our students embrace the benefits of technology while ensuring they are getting the education and skills they need to succeed?
Could you repeat that? It's a little long. What sort of shortcuts you referring to?
I'm just answering the question. I have no...
Can you repeat the question?
I can repeat it, but I can't interpret it. Technology in the classroom is here to stay, but it lends itself to shortcuts and easy access to cheating. How can we as a district help our students embrace the benefits of technology while ensuring they are getting the education and skills they need to succeed?
This is a good question because we are in technology age nowadays. Technology is driving us in everywhere, society-wise. And the school, of course, is no exception. One of the important things is that we, as a Board of Education, must support the faculty and school administration to keep up with the technology. We have to be ahead of the technology. Otherwise, we cannot educate students. Sometimes we know, when the early days, the cellphone came out and so forth, the students know more than the teachers. And that shouldn't be the case. So we need to spend funds, train, educate teachers to be ahead of the technology. Don't be afraid of technology. Say, wow, this is out of my realm. And I think if the school district focused on that, we will be able to help the students to take advantage of technology and be smart on top. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
Well, we certainly can't run from it or we'll get run over. This is coming very rapidly. I think, I think it's, it starts in a big part with our excellent educators and making sure that they're supported with, with what's out there. What are the tools? What are, you know, what are, what are the opportunities for them to? How does this enhance actually the education? Because, you know, we've known for a while now that it's less about having to know all of this information. It's, it's all about how to know how to use it. AI technology is, is just something that's going to continue to grow. So, so we need to, you know, embrace it in a big way. And I think part of that also, if, from a board perspective, is making sure that we look at our policies. You know, we've reviewed them a few years ago. Over the course of three years, we reviewed all of our policies. Make sure our code of conduct is, is up to date to, to address these, these issues. And, and recognize that, you know, these students are minors, they're learning. And anytime they make mistakes, it's a learning opportunity as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Candell?
I know that there are some, that the digital literacy standards have just been adjusted, I guess you would say, from the state. So I know the teachers are, and our, and our directors of learning and curriculum are working on that. We have to continue to support the PLD for the teachers as well as teaching the children how to use everything appropriately, whether it's AI or how to use computers and how to safely navigate, you know, whatever the latest trend is, you know, not to put a paper clip in a, in a USB port. I don't know, whatever the craziest thing that's been happening is. You know, policies get tricky. That, that is our role as a board, is to set the policies for our school district and, and the superintendent has to implement them. But policies get tricky on something with this too because of the fact that, because it's moving so fast and it's changing so fast. So by the time we set a policy, it's gonna have to be changed or altered or switched again. So there has to be a balance out there. But I think between policies and the professional development and teaching of our children, we can, we can get there.
So Somers was already ahead of the game by focusing on global citizenship years ago. We can also continue to focus on portfolios and problem solving as is evidenced in the middle years program and the IB program and the IB diploma program. We can also teach students how to use it appropriately. There are definitely times where AI is very, very helpful. For example, as a teacher, it is fantastically helpful when you want to differentiate a specific material to numerous different reading levels without handing children different color-coded packets so everybody knows that one person's got the hard one and one person's got the easy one. What we also need to do is make sure that we support our teachers. They are the ones who are seeing where it's being used inappropriately and where it's being used appropriately. And we need to make sure that when they come to the board with questions and concerns and... and PDs that they would like to go to or experts that they would like to bring in, that we recognize that they are the ones who are seeing the immediate problem and that we help them. We need to embrace technology for all that it can bring to us, but we need to make sure that it does not take away education.
Okay, thank you. And, um, we will begin closing statements in a, in a minute and they will be in the reverse order of, um, of how we started. But before we do, I just want to remind everyone, I want to thank everyone for attending, for everyone listening, to everyone who submitted questions. I want to thank the candidates for being here. And I want to remind everyone, this, the vote is next Tuesday, um, week from tomorrow, May 20th. Voting hours are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the middle school. And in addition to voting for your school board candidates, you will be voting on your school budget as well as a proposition for construction of improvements to school district buildings and facilities. Okay, so, uh, one-minute closing statements. Ms. Galino?
So thank you very much to all of you who attended in person, to all of you who are watching online, to all of you who took the opportunity to participate in your democracy. Our schools are the cornerstone of our community. They drive our property values, they drive what makes our town unique, they drive the experiences that our children have each and every day, from Primrose being a place of great beginnings all the way up to the high school. They are valuable, they are important, they are forever evolving and they are something that I would greatly value the opportunity to be a bigger part of. I have seen how powerful they can be through PTA and through SEF and I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to be able to lead in an even larger way by getting to be a candidate on the school board. I sincerely hope that you have heard how much I value transparent communication, that I believe in supporting our teachers, that I believe that there are numerous paths to educational excellence and that there are numerous things that a school should involve. Thank you and please come out and vote on May 20th.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and PTA Council for having this. Um, I think it's so valuable and I appreciate who, everyone who, who came and who are watching online. Even with all the great things happening in our school district community, I think there's still work, a lot of work to be done. And looking ahead, I'm committed to continuing to work collaboratively with parents, educators and community to enhance the quality of our education in our district, ensuring that all our schools are equipped with the resources and support needed to provide an exceptional education for all our students, um, building on the progress we've made in addressing new challenges with thoughtful and effective solutions. And as members of this community, we may have differing opinions. However, we should always listen to each other, maintain an open mind and remember that our primary objective is to support the students so they may all achieve success. And I always like to remember that decisions are made by those who show up. Um, I have to say that our teachers and our students show up every day to our schools and they're a wonderful, wonderful Somers community family, our school district, and that we're so far ahead of the game on so many things, including the graduation measures that are coming up. Um, and I hope that everyone remembers to come out and vote on Tuesday, May 20th.
Thank you, PTA and the League of Women Voters for once again, um, putting on this great and always challenging forum. Um, I, I'm here to support our entire district. Uh, I'm here to support our educators and, and listen and help provide what, what it is that you need. Um, uh, the, this focus on the students, maintain the focus on all of the students and, and the breadth and depth, you know, is, is what we always are, are looking for so that everyone has the options and the support that they need, um, both to be challenged, supported and to be in a safe, uh, environment, see themselves as having great opportunities and then also us having the, the pathways for them to get there. Uh, I thank everyone who's volunteering their time, uh, to, and is willing to volunteer. This is one role. We have a strong PTA in our, in our community, um, they're excellent mentors and please come out and vote on May 20th. Thank you.
I said before that I believe in the board, the election is the most democratic, uh, election that in this country. And I served 18 years. I've still believe that and I hope we uphold this process. And I also said that our children is our future, is our future of the country and we all should be really paying attention to educating our children. And I want to spend some time, uh, to say a few words, uh, for the other candidates, unfortunately, for whatever reason that they cannot attend. I wish they could because they are very qualified and many of them have their ideas and I feel we should seek them out. So as audience out there listening to this forum, would, I do urge you to consider, uh, looking to these candidates, the, cast your vote for the best candidate and that is the process we should have for the school board election. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for every, everyone very much. Thank you.